Good morning, everyone. John Colwell. Back in the seat to again welcome you to September Joint Authority and Canal Board Meeting. With me this morning fellow trustees Dennis Trainer, Mike Balboni, and B Gonzalez. Trace McKibben and Tony Pessente have been appropriately excused. Justin and the rest of his team are with us and will be joining us throughout the course of our discussion and dialogue. And with that brief intro, I'm pleased to call this meeting to order. We've all had an opportunity to review the agenda and materials provided, unless anyone has any changes or questions thereon. I'd ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second, Michael, thank you. Dennis, Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion passed. Contractors list, Karen's, as she always does, advised us of all those benefiting from the approvals. And unless there's any other updates, I'm assuming that everyone's had an opportunity to appropriately review and respond. As we typically do, we're going to begin our meeting with the relatively brief half hour, 45 minute executive session. If I could, I'd ask for a motion to conduct that executive session pursuant to Section 105 of the Public Officers Law.
So moved.
Move second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will adjourn to executive session and we'll be back in front of all of you in a little bit. Thank you very much.
Good morning and welcome back. We are live.
Welcome back, everyone. If I could ask for a motion to resume the meeting in open session. Dennis, thank you. Michael, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We're back in open session. As always, reaffirm that no votes were taken while we were in executive session. Our meeting today includes a series of presentations, many of which are traditional by our officer team that said, got an exciting presentation in terms of the Eureka Challenge. So we're all look forward to that. Brian Stratton's also joined us today. He'll give us a great update on where we are with many of our important Canal's initiatives. And we'll close with a couple committee reports. So the next hour and a half, get a good feel and flavor for where we are, where we stand. And kicking that off, as always, our esteemed leader, President and CEO, Justin, the floor is yours. The pulpit is yours. The podium is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Morning, trustees, NIPA colleagues, members of the public, and our guests today. Welcome. As we sit here, heading into the fourth quarter, I have to say, I think we're really firing on all cylinders and we're going to be in a position to close the year out strong, as you'll hear from my colleagues in senior management. So today, I want to talk to you about innovation. As I've said to you before, you know, I think to think about the role that NIPA is playing. We want to be first, continue to be first movers. We want to be known as first movers and innovators on behalf of our customers in the state. That's going to be the theme. And I think we've actually heard some discussion of some of our innovative efforts earlier today in the Governance Committee. But today, I'd like to talk about innovation from the top down and innovation from the bottom up, which is what Eureka is all about. So one of the ways we're innovating now is through policy development. And we take advantage of policies that are available to us. And as you all know, the federal government just passed the Inflation Reduction Act recently. And that's going to, that's going to inform some of our innovative thinking around the authority, because it's going to open doors to us that weren't available to us before. So as you know, the IRA does a few things beneficial to our operations. One is, as you may know, the public power industry over the last several years has been fighting for reforms to allow public power entities that don't pay taxes to get the benefit of these tax credits. And so one of the key elements of the Inflation Reduction Act is the enactment of this debt direct pay provision, which now levels the playing field between private developers that would take advantage of tax credits and build that into their financial, you know, proposals and public power like NIPA. So we'll be able to get essentially a check for the tax benefit to our project. So this will help us in many ways. It may enable us to do more customer sided renewable projects. There's storage benefits in there as well. So it restores also the two tax credits, the ITC and the PTC are back in play that were, you know, fought for by the, by the energy industry and so important to the energy transition as we go forward. And you should know that the Inflation Reduction Act is totally aligned with our overall Vision 2030 strategy. It fits very nicely through that. And in terms of the, our strategy, as we sit here today, we're, we're proud to say that we continue to innovate. And two great examples of that that I'd like to share with you today are, many of you may have seen that structure alongside our building outside. That's our, that's our Cadenza battery, which is really a very interesting effort that our R and D folks worked on that will help to prevent against thermal runaway in batteries by essentially, as I understand it, segmenting the batteries and isolating, isolating them. And what's, what's really significant about this particular development is it speaks to and seeks to address a problem with battery deployment, meaning in densely populated areas, right? Because there's an issue with placement of batteries in densely populated communities based upon the potential for thermal runaway. And this is something that potentially can address that. So we're really excited. We received an award at the Cloud for Utilities event, essentially recognizing the important work that NIPA had done to facilitate this, this research and development. And so we're very proud to be sharing that with you today. The other item that you'll see here today, you'll remember that we came to you, I think, a couple of years ago with our last, our last challenge.
Before you jump to that.
Sure.
No, no, I just wanted to congratulate you on the smart energy.
That's great. Yeah, it's, it's really great for our team to be recognized. It's a real motivator when your, your work is actually picked up by the industry and recognized as being, you know, leading. And that's what we want to do. We want to be leading in and innovating for the industry, for our customers.
Joe was all that happy.
Joe was photoshopped in there. He actually wasn't there that day.
So back, going back to the Inflation Reduction Act.
Yes, of course.
In terms of who we are, what we do, what we're about, does this change any of that dynamic in terms of how we think? And there are those that are always suggesting we should be something other than who we are, take on more editorialize a bit for what if any ramifications there are?
Sure.
Tag some of those dots.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's obviously still early and there's no shortage of advisors that are out there combing through the act and analyzing it and helping us interpret where the benefits are for us. So I would say that it's, it's a little early. The one thing that I did mention about customer sided projects and the availability of support for, for storage and the ability to do projects like that for customers, I think is something that will likely change our thinking. But I'd like to come back to you at a future meeting and actually show you, you know, where we think we actually can apply some of this, some of these subsidy dollars to advance NIPA's agenda and the state's overall goals.
Okay.
So the second, the second award is the Israeli Challenge Award, if we could go back to the last slide. This is also an interesting innovative project. We had one round of this already where we made an award, I think in 2020 or 2021. This is the second go around. It's led by Alan Etlinger in our R and D department. And that's Annette Katz, who's from the Israeli Embassy here in New York. And we, this, this award went to a company called Zuz. And what they, what they've developed is a, like a super fast charging battery for EVs. And so we're, we're delighted to have been able to facilitate that technology and hopefully share it with the, with the EV industry. And the Israelis are really forward leaning on technology, in particular, energy technology. They're really heavily leaning in in that area. And so the partnership between NIPA, that we like to think of ourselves as a first mover here in the States and Israel, is really exciting. And it's something that the governor has recognized on two occasions now as sort of a meaningful partnership between not only NIPA, but New York State and the US and the Israelis and some of the great work that they're doing there. The, the next, what I, that's from the top down. Now from the bottom up, you recall back in, in, in 2018, we came to you with our first, our first Eureka Challenge. And I want to share with you some of the outputs from, from that exercise.
Four years ago?
Yeah. Yeah, we were talking about that last night. It's been four years.
Four hundred years ago.
Yeah. Yeah. So you'll remember the great day we had when we, when we made the awards to the winners last time around. So I just wanted to share with you a couple of examples of what came out of that. We didn't just do the Eureka Award to recognize innovative thinking, but we did it in order to try to come up with ideas that would actually improve our operations here. So share a couple of examples of, of aspects of the Eureka project and the winners that actually resulted in, in benefits to the company. So the first one is the, is what we call Watson, the Administrative Advisor. And so this is a custom built Microsoft Teams team. And it's, it helps, it helps inform the, in the process of task work, processes, development. And so it's, it's actually been applied in the organization and is actually, you know, providing benefits in terms of providing consistency in administrative processes and quicker ease of access to organization wide administrative tasks. So that was one winner, Watson. The next one.
Was being utilized today.
Correct. Yeah. And the, and the, the organization is benefiting from it. The next one that we awarded was the On Demand Bowie System. This, this dealt with some improvements in how we remove the ice boom. I know Chairman, you're familiar with that process every year. It prevents ice from flowing into the Niagara River and thereby impacting our operations at the, at the plant. And so this is actually in, in, in operation now and is helping the team locate junction plates for quick and easy retrieval of the materials, thus eliminating hazardous days on the water. So another, another place where, where that, the outputs of that work had come, come full circle and now benefit the organization. So it's great to see that not only are we creative in our thinking here, but that thinking actually can be applied to and improve the operations of the authority.
Hate to think that we're close to, we're putting the boom back in again, but I guess time marches.
Yeah. And finally, the third one is our 3D modeling. And this is, this is a use and awareness of special 3D scanning cameras and modeling technology. And it's become more commonplace across NIPA. This was an idea that, an award that was made and again in operation. It's enabled virtual bidding walkthroughs to take place and walkthroughs for electrical contractors of certain plant areas, which proved helpful during the COVID-19 pandemic in particular. So these are three great examples of the, the benefits of encouraging innovation in the organization. And before I turn it over to the HR team to talk about this year's winners, I'd be happy to take any questions on any of the, any of the materials that I previously discussed.
As the competition over the last four years has helped stimulate just ongoing sharing of innovative thoughts and ideas as opposed to, I'm going to save this idea for the next challenge. Is there a steadier flow of, I'll use your phrase, bottom up or middle up?
Yeah.
Thoughts and thinking? What have you seen in terms of just any cultural shift or organizational dynamic as to how people respond to?
Yeah.
Hey, they will listen. They will adopt. They will adapt.
Yeah, I don't think we're seeing anybody sitting on ideas, waiting for the next round of challenges. I think it's, we're enabling that thinking and we're encouraging people to come forward with ideas. There's no, there are no, you know, stupid ideas, right? We want that. We want them to be, to feel confident in coming forward with ideas. And, and some of, some of our winners, you know, become rock stars around the organization too. They get, you know, and people want to follow that model and try to gain additional visibility by coming up with a new idea. And so, so I think it's all positive.
Take risk. We're willing to invest and support change. And great.
Yep.
Perfect.
Over the years, have you ever looked back on the things that have been brought over the last couple of years to where they actually went? I remember years ago, there was a, was a new type of wind turbine that was rounded, didn't have big blades. Have you ever followed up on in terms of where that kind of technology has gone from here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, you know, to the extent that we can, even if it is not really a, a, a technology that goes to market, I'm sure there's learning out of every innovative exercise. And so our R and D team, I'm sure keeps track of, you know, what's been brought to market, what hasn't been brought to market, you know, troubleshooting, what, why didn't it, why wasn't it successful? And you apply that learning to the R and D work that we're, that we're doing internally. All right.
So before you jump to the next one, so we, my recollection, four years old, but wasn't to make this a every four year contest. Obviously COVID and other things get in our way. So what's your, what's your thinking relative to that?
Yeah, I think we'll come back to you more rapidly than four years. You hit it on the head. It was, you know, sidetracked by COVID. I don't know, just thinking off the top of my head, maybe it's a two year exercise, you know, to, to give, give those eyes, ideas a chance to come to fruition and see, you know, see if they're successful or not. So two years, every two years might be a good cadence.
Okay, great.
Okay, with that, I'm going to call up the HR team to talk about this year's Eureka winners. Jessica Swanson.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Good morning, Chairman, Board, NIPA colleagues, Canal's colleagues, everyone here today. My name is Jessica Swanson. I'm the manager of organizational talent development in the HR group. And I'm really excited to be here with you today. I was here four years ago as well, the other winners. And on behalf of everybody here, all the winners, we're just appreciative of the opportunity to be here with you. So thank you very much. So the main purpose of the Eureka program, Carly, next slide, if you go to, is to really make sure, you know, that employees' voices can be heard. So organizational engagement is really important, especially when we want creative ideas. And through the competition, we did just that. But Eureka, getting at what Justin was talking about before, is an ongoing program. So it is actually not just only during the competition where people can submit ideas, but people can submit ideas at any time throughout the competition, throughout, outside of the competition as well. So where, what we're looking to do with the competitions, what we did this year is to really energize the organization, hence having the competition. So we're really excited about that. We will be sharing with you the winners, the four winners today. And through the, through the competition, we really saw our values coming through in every piece of the process. We're really excited to actually, this year, have the first year that our Canal's employees were able to participate in the competition. We actually have a Canal's winner here with us too, which you'll meet in a little bit. So thank you to Rebecca and Brian team and everybody who helped support that. Everyone really was able to contribute. We had NIPA management employees, union employees, and Canal employees all participate. We had over 100 ideas submitted. We had our leaders come together and really work as one team. We had 10 evaluation workshops where the leaders came together and looked at the ideas in relation to our strategic pillars and priorities and narrowed them down according to that. So we saw the collaboration at the leadership level, at the ideators coming together and thinking through ideas together and building upon one another's ideas. And ultimately, we had over 300 employees vote on the final winners of the competition. So the competition really was for the organization, but also decided by the organization as well. It was really a very inclusive process, which we're very proud of. So through the competition, we have four winning categories or types of innovation here. And we're really intentional about making sure the winners come from all, all, come from all types of the, come from all innovation types. Innovation doesn't happen only in certain levels or from certain people across the organization. It can come from anyone, anywhere with a great idea, whether you're working on assets, whether you're working in finance, in HR. There's always a process improvement and idea to be had. So we made sure, you know, the ideas are submitted based upon these different innovation types. You can see here, there's four types, so four winning groups, which you'll meet in a minute. The types range from the enabling ideas, so more lower risk, process efficiency ideas, to the big leaping ideas, so bigger, higher innovation ideas. So with that being said, I'd like to share each of the four winning video pitches. So the employees had to vote on these pitches that the finalists created. So for each pitch, I will ask the winning group to come up and they can, you know, answer any questions as well.
Voting open to the entire organization? So 300 of the entire organization opted to?
Exactly.
To vote? Okay.
Yep. So for the first category, our enabling category.
Campaigning and so.
Oh, yes. Yes. There is a lot. Yes. Yep. There's a lot, a lot, a lot of working with our communications group and all our, our, you know, you know, we have a committee on this and there was a lot of, that went into it, to putting the word out as well. So, so with that being said, I'd like to invite Vijay, our first winner, to come up here. And we are going to show Vijay's winning idea, his video pitch, which was the internal customer coordination task force idea. So Carly.
Hello, my name is Vijay Thomas, and I work in customer project delivery. Communication is key to relationships. Our communication with our customers is strong, but we're lacking communication internally. Currently, our corporate structure follows the typical paths of communication within each department. But there isn't established communication lines between NIPA project managers dealing with the same customer, but in different departments. The problem with this is that the project manager for customer two might have a good idea, a lesson learned, or key contact that the project manager in another program might need. We need to create communication lines that connect NIPA employees of different departments dealing with the same customer. We need to open a channel of communication and knowledge sharing between the customer facing NIPA employees, which would help to improve collaboration and coordination within NIPA. Some combination of Microsoft Teams, CDEX, CRM, Project Hub, and/or customer task force meetings should be able to tackle this problem. But we need to expend effort to utilize this technology to create these avenues of collaboration. This is not intended to be a bureaucratic structure that hinders work or progress. It's meant to be something where we have collaboration and communication. It's simply communication lines to make us more effective. I think we can all get behind that for NIPA and for its customers.
Congratulations to Vijay.
Well done, Vijay.
Thank you.
Effective communication.
Yeah. Thank you.
What kind of response or feedback have you gotten from others as?
Oh, I think everyone in, in my department, people, my peers, we're all, you know, this is a problem that we've seen and we just haven't figured out how to solve it. And, you know, it was something that, it was, it was, it was bubbling up and it was, it was something that we needed. You know, one of the things, you know, working with a lot of the other government agencies in my position, what we see the other government agencies end up becoming is every group becomes very, very siloed. And that silo just, just hinders any kind of progress, any kind of, and, you know, as NIPA keeps expanding, which is great, we, like, we all just don't want to become like that. And so I think everyone's very excited, you know, to, to figure out how to do that and continue to do that. And one of the, the really cool parts was, I was talking to someone who's been here for, you know, 25 plus years. And she was mentioning that, you know, back in the 90s, there used to be a, something called Focus, where they would go out to the local hotel and, and have a customer group, you know, gather together and, and just talk about these ideas. And we kind of like lost sight of that, but something that we can definitely bring back. So it's kind of in that same vein.
So where is the solution in the evolution stage? Is this problem identification or your, your solution is, is it being developed or has it been developed?
So the interesting thing is, the Project Hub initiative that's going on right now is already looking at, you know, the technology side, the software side of how to solve this. So, you know, within the next, you know, six to eight months, we're going to see the technology meet where, where we need to be in order for this solution to advance. The next point is basically just gathering the heads. And, you know, one of the things I, I called it a customer coordination task force, but I'm thinking even, you know, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not sold on the name. If we want to go back to that name, Focus, and, you know, like we go with this idea of, you know, finding our, our customers' utility solution, right? And so we have these, you know, I won't say an offsite, because I don't want to create any, you know, budgetary concerns. But we can have a meeting where we, we all gather together with, you know, all the internal, anyone who's like, for example, I work a lot with NICA. So anyone who's working with NICA, I work with EJ a lot, and all those different groups with internally, we all were just to meet together on an, on an annual, semi annual basis. It would, it would help just to give us a focus on, you know, what, you know, solutions we needed to give, right? So.
Need a.
Kaizen.
A kaizen.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very well done. Hold on. I'll be, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Vijay. And now I'd like to move on to our improving category winner. So I'd like to invite George and Michael to come on up while we play your video pitch as well. This idea is an internal social video sharing platform for employees' tutorials or how to's.
Hi, my name is George Menendez. I'm a Senior Real Time Systems Engineer with the Operations and Control Systems Group and based out of White Plains. Our Eureka idea is an internal social video sharing platform for quick employee created how to and tutorial type videos. This platform would provide us the ability to create and access short bite sized videos that would relay the necessary details for NIPA employees to perform a specific task or to solve a specific problem. The videos would be accessed and stored via a centralized location that would be accessible to all of NIPA employees. And the videos would be organized, say by category or topic, and would be easily searchable. Our idea supports the Vision 2030 priorities of digitization and resource alignment by enabling our workforce with cutting edge digital tools and improving on access to information and knowledge. With key information and fingertips, we can more quickly, effectively, and safely support our systems, our internal customers, as well as our external customers. Vote for us.
Many of us perform similar work across different parts of the organization or in different regions. This platform would empower all of us at NIPA and Canal's to share our knowledge and expertise, effectively breaking down silos of information and facilitating collaboration between all of our business units.
Vote today. Very direct.
Vote for us. Yeah, it was a campaign. Yeah.
Well done.
Very fortunate.
Are these videos out there now? And this is an effort to stimulate and support more and catalog and organize? Or is it not a methodology that's embraced in light of current technology? Well, you guys do a lot of this already and.
We do. I mean, there's, there's several groups that they create their own videos of little how to videos.
Right.
And they store them on their machines.
Right.
That's, that's the only place where they live.
Right.
But they don't, they don't get shared, right? Talked about silos in the last presentation. That's, that's really what it is. You want to break those silos and in, you know, share all of that information with other disciplines and other groups and other sites and not keep them locally, you know, close to once.
Sure.
Good idea.
Yeah, that knowledge transfer is a challenge.
That, Mr. Chairman, this is such a great thing for that issue of turnover, knowledge transfer, making sure that people still know how the systems, the older systems, particularly in NIPA, as Joe Kessler has told me, there's so many systems that almost are pneumatic and, and not digital. And so who knows how to work that? You do this, you can still continue that knowledge base. That's great.
Exactly. Great. Exactly. Right. That's a good point. It's not just for new technology. It also applies for the old stuff, for the, you know, for the more vintage type of equipment that only few have knowledge about.
Do you have, do you have training for the vintage operators who may not be as skilled in the social media platforms? Or is that part of your pitch as well? Or you assume everyone has?
No, you can assume. You can assume. Yeah. I mean, if they need, if they need help or if there's a informal training, then we'll certainly.
No, you can assume, you can assume. Yeah. I mean, if they need, if they need help or if there's a informal training, then we'll, we'll certainly provide that for sure.
So you don't need TikTok expertise or anything?
Our vision of the platform is that it's user-friendly and intuitive.
Well, terrific. Congratulations. Eric, hop in here. You're good. You're good. Stay put. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, George and Michael.
We can do a video on like, on board meetings.
Great. And now I'd like to move us to our third category, our third winner, our leading winner. So Marissa, where is Marissa from our Canals organization? Would you like to come up and we will share your video pitch? Marissa's idea was around Adventures by Disney partnership tours to reimagine the Canals. So, thank you, Marissa. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marissa Pester and I work with the Canal Corporation. One of the ongoing struggles with upstate New York is finding new ways to connect with out-of-state audiences and encourage them to visit our neck of the woods. My solution would be to partner with Adventures by Disney to offer exclusive family cruises along our canals. Adventures by Disney is a division of the Walt Disney Company that offers destination vacation packages all around the world. The division was founded in 2005 and has been offering unique family excursions across six continents for almost 20 years. They reach out to local vendors to book everything from accommodations to dining to group activities. And every tour group is led by two Disney adventure guides to ensure everyone has a magical time. The Disney name conveys quality storytelling and one-of-a-kind experiences to audiences all around the world. By partnering with Adventures by Disney, NIPA and the Canal Corporation would be able to reach a wider audience and invite visitors from across the globe to explore New York's beautiful canal system. Families who enjoy an Adventure by Disney vacation to upstate New York will want to encourage their friends to explore Herkimer's diamond mines, get an up-close demonstration of how our canal locks work, or kayak along the Oswego Canal. From four-day cruises along the Champlain Canal to five or seven-day cruises along the Erie Canal, the possibilities for adventure are endless.
Well, the timing's perfect because Disney had it shut down for Ian, so now they're gonna follow up and pursue the canals where the waters are calm and the sun is shining, right? Again, I would happen to, you know, catch you yesterday, this is the beginning of an outreach process, whether it be to Disney or others.
Yes, yes, we are considering other companies such as Talc, Yankee Trails, Intrepid Tours, Trail Father, and anyone who would conduct tour groups along our canal system for out-of-state visitors.
Yeah, even if there's multiple providers and, and the like, right? So, I don't know, B, I know you're an avid canal user, supporter.
No, it's really exciting and, um, the canal has embarked on a project to really make the canal story a more inclusive story, which I think will, will appeal to a broader audience, which is really very exciting, if all of this can come together.
Yeah, it's terrific. And I'm, I'm sure Brian, you're, you know, you and your team are fully embracing.
We are absolutely thrilled. We put out a RFP, I think, uh, back in the pre-NIPA days, I think in 2013, 2014, for cruise companies. We got any solid applications, but I am confident, I am, I am confident, Chairman, that all of the, all of the support NIPA has, has delivered to canal, we're going to be able to, to be able to lift that up now. This is a fantastic idea. We are, it's the crowd that, 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 that Marissa's brought us into, in, in, into the winner's circle.
Yeah, no, it's terrific. Well, kudos, Marissa. We're excited. Very nice. Congratulations. That's terrific.
Good job.
Get the broader group, come on up. Come on up front here. That's good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, my, the fact, a fact that I learned when I went to a presentation about making the canal story more inclusive is that almost 40% of the canal workforce was a workforce of color as the canal was being built. That is something that most of us probably never would have mentioned. Did I get that number right?
Thank you for your advocacy. I think we're, we're in a real round of some period and.
Well, and we're naming.
Oh, yes, very exciting. So next week at the Canals Conference, um, there is a tug being named after Harriet Tubman. And not only that, it's in the Rochester area where she grew up and I guess representatives from the Douglas, Frederick Douglass family, as well as the Tubman family will be a part of the presentation. That's very exciting.
That was great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, good segue, good.
Thank you, Marissa. And now that brings us to our final winner, our leaping winner, winning group. This was a collaboration between a few different ideas that came in, so you'd all like to come on up. We have Michael, Saja, Frank, Ray, Amon, Jeff, and John.
Give us the number, maybe we can have the folks on this side if you want to come over here.
Supposed to be really good. Wonder leap being it too, there's a lot.
Greetings, friends. Mike Jackovic here, part of Eureka team NIPO VIZ. NIPO VIZ stands for Virtual Information Integration System. The idea our team of seven came up with is simply a cloud-based VR virtual reality integration system, which ties our existing information systems together. It incorporates them within a single platform that will also provide a virtual site representation of our assets, our equipment, and our facilities. The implementation of this idea would give the end user, everyone at NIPA, a quick, mobile-friendly access to a virtual representation of the assets in the field, as well as the information available on those assets. So imagine you're standing in front of any NIPA asset, you pull out your NIPA iPhone, you scan the QR code, and within a few seconds, you have on your mobile device all the available information associated with that asset right at your fingertips. Whether you wanted to jump into Maximo to look at asset details or the open work orders associated with it, jump into Pi Vision to see real-time information on that asset. It's all available in one unified location and the potential to add in a VR map with it. This idea would benefit the entire organization, whether you're an engineer working in the field or remote, or a craft employee working onsite. You can all pull up this information without searching too far.
Did you audition or compete for who got to do the video?
I drew the short strokes. There I was.
You didn't even give me a chance to take your helmet off. It must be high-risk working at office, you know?
You're glad you picked up on that.
Safety first, you know? Well, give us a little bit of, so how did you collaborate? For the, do you guys all work together or no, you never worked together and you came together as a result of this opportunity?
This is all my team.
Okay.
So we are from White Plains, they are from Niagara and, uh, so three ideas, three different ways how we're looking at the problem and it's one unified solution.
One blended.
Yeah.
So rather than competing, you chose to collaborate?
Yeah.
It's not here to vote on everything, right?
We eliminated the competition.
Had to join a winner. Well, that's, that's terrific. So again, help us with where the evolution of this is, is this something that's in the works already or no, this is.
So right now it's kind of.
This is literally leaping us forward.
Idea phase, I think we have the different pieces of information throughout, you know, different applications in NIPA and just the fact, try to bring them all together and the one single platform and utilize all the functionality of the, the phone that, that can, uh, that we can leverage.
Part of this is already in development. I mean, the, the operators at Niagara already use mobile devices to access information on the assets, you know, do inspection rounds. And that's all getting rolled out through the different departments. But there's, there's so much more that it could do rather than just be a, a mobile link to Maximo. You could incorporate everything into that platform and, you know, not shown in that video, but, you know, if we ever do have to work remotely again, a tool like this would give everybody the ability to.
Yeah, we actually had someone from safety reach out and mention a PPE or hazardous materials and, and different things like that. So it seems, uh, other people in the organization are interested as well.
And it can be expanded to anything, right? It's not only the operational assets, the laptop or anything which will create a help desk ticket. You can just add it from your mobile and it will pull up all the information. So it can be integrated with multiple systems in different ways and making the information easily accessible with, for everyone.
So what resources do need to be provided to enable this and other ideas? We've got all that allocated, Justin, or Adam, or?
We have sponsors associated, executive sponsors associated with each one of our ideas. And that's, you know, talking through that next process is what would be a roadmap for this, what would be a budget needed in, in the future.
All right. So that's part of the next step. Well, congratulations. For the collaboration, we just said that. Hold up, Mike, look, good job.
Nicely done.
Yeah. Need the wide-angle lens. Get me in the back. I'm going in the back.
If you guys could orient yourself this way, look towards me. Yeah, come forward a little bit, Jeff.
You're out there.
Me too.
No, you're good, you're good.
You're good.
Hey, guys. Big smile.
Thank you so much to all of our winners here today and for everyone's engagement and connection to the program. Um, our next steps is to connect the ideators with their executive sponsors. Each already have one assigned to them through our EMC members. And making sure we're connecting again, the right people in the business who may be working on pieces of this already too, and make sure we're connecting with the right, right business stakeholders and exploring, um, the ideas, bringing them to life. So excited to, to see where we're at, um, next time we come together. So thank you very much for your.
The other 104 ideas, what happens to them? I mean, they didn't win the, the vote, but I'm sure there's a lot of good ideas in there.
Definitely, so.
How do we enable or support them?
Yeah, so we, we gave every person who submitted an idea an opportunity to receive feedback, um, on their idea, whether it's still good to go ahead or not, for whatever reason. Some ideas, some groups just loved every idea, you know, some of the, the evaluation sessions and they want to go ahead with some of the, some of the other ideas. So we're connecting the people who are in those evaluation sessions to the ideators and to make sure we're really drawing those connections so they can start talking about the ideas.
I mean, have we got sponsors for a lot of those as well, or?
We have, there, there's for the evaluation, some of the tactic leads we've reached out to, to make sure that they can, you know, progress, some of them. I know Sarah's reached out already to go through all of her ideas, so there's definitely engagement with the other ideas as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Well, it's always energizing. Uh, as I remember telling Justin four years ago, it doesn't seem like four years ago.
Does it?
Yeah.
We were all duly impressed with the intellectual, further displays the power of the intellectual capital of the organization. Always, you know, blows us away, um, you know, every meeting and a great opportunity to demonstrate that and encourage and welcome creativity and risk-taking. You know, that's what it's all about. So.
Definitely.
That's fantastic.
This continues, keep submitting ideas because this continues throughout the, after the competitions too. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much.
Justin, anything else, uh, in your sphere?
No, I think, as I said, I think we're heading into the Q4, uh, in, in a very good place.
Ready to finish strong, you promised us we're gonna be.
I did.
You know, straight, straight A's on the report card this year.
Yep, absolutely.
All right.
You'll hear from Adam, he's, we're, we're firing on all cylinders there as well.
Bagger Vance, yep, he's already, you know, he's covered down every quarter, every month, so we're good with all of that, so. Okay, super. All right, uh, Joe, you presenting remotely or?
Yeah, I can present remotely if you can hear me.
Yep, the audio is working. We don't need a Eureka challenge on that, so.
Well, thank you, Chairman Kolmo and trustees in the board and congratulations to all those Eureka winners. Looking forward to supporting that. And I also want to thank Carly and the secretary's office for putting my, my report behind them because, um, what a tough act to follow that's gonna be. So I'll do my best to be as exciting and energizing as they were, so thank you. Uh, next slide, please, Carly. So, good news right out of the gate, a little bit of a retrospective. As you may recall, we were certified, um, uh, three years ago in ISO 55001. That's a standard of our asset management practices. And we recently just got our external audit and they reaffirmed our certification, uh, for the next three years. So I want to congratulate the team first of all. This really includes a concerted effort, uh, from everybody from risk to finance, HR, IT, and, and of course, operations folks and others. But when you hear things like, um, integrated smart operating centers and, and smart M&amp;D and, and asset performance management software, those are manifestations of tools of really this overarching process, which, uh, really is an assurance, not only for, for our own, um, benefit, to make sure that we're doing things right and keeping things in a state of good repair. Uh, but also our customers, so that they know and have confidence that we're, we're, we're measuring risk and finance and everything else in the decisions that we make around our assets. So we remain actually the, uh, still the only North American generation transmission, uh, utility, uh, that is certified NICE 5001. There are other utilities to have, uh, single assets out there that are, are certified. And of course, internationally, especially in the Commonwealth nations or other utilities that are certified. But after three years, we remain, uh, still a, the only one, which is a tribute to the team and the support board gives us to, uh, to maintain these practices. So thank you for that. Next slide, please. So actually leveraging, uh, you know, some of the discussion Justin mentioned about being forward-looking and being first movers and also this theme of, uh, the steady flow that you mentioned, Chairman Kolmo, around innovation. You'll see in the next few years, uh, us leaning very heavily in the area of robotics, uh, for the New York Power Authority. And this is just a quick chart to show the initial roadmap. Uh, one of the things that we, uh, we learned, and I'll focus a little bit on, uh, the aerial systems or the drones in the next slide, but, uh, that, that we're really categorizing several ways robotics can be used. And you see the categorizations that we've collaborated with EPRI and other utilities, uh, in terms of not only the drones, but agile mobile robots or dogs, we call them, autonomous underwater vehicles. You may recall recently, we did our first inspection at Niagara of our tunnels, uh, our conduits, if you will, for the water with unmanned, uh, underwater robots. But we're also looking at other innovative things like walk climbers and other specialty robots that are all intended to not only produce, um, or increase productivity, but also to increase safety with our, our teams. The reality is these technologies are almost no longer a novelty. Uh, they're really becoming sophisticated and the tools that we use with the robots are really where we're going to focus our attention. So as you can see, we'll test and learn this year. We already are doing that. We have several use cases and we intend to deploy at scale our, our program going forward in 2023. So you'll hear, uh, somewhere about that and hopefully we'll have some great, uh, images for you as we update you going forward. Uh, next slide, please. Again, focusing on the, the aerial portion of it, uh, this is where we had the most learning and we really leveraged it. It kind of, frankly, goes back, uh, more than a dozen years ago, we did have drones in our fleet. And at that time, we were thinking about some very sophisticated payloads and, and technologies to, uh, to support what we're doing there. What we've learned. What we've learned since then, and really it took a disaster for us to kind of figure this out. But when we went to Puerto Rico, what we learned is really having a good, high quality image is the key. So what we're after with all these cases is working with our vendors. And again, the increased increased productivity and three D modeling that we're spoken to before that Justin talked about in our previous Eureka competitions, these are all coming together now. Because when we have that high quality image, we realize that the solutions can that that we have are really processing thousands of images per hour, rapidly identifying asset components. And what we're able to do is create a three pronged solution where we have some mission management, software, media management, image processing. With that, we can actually use kind of in the office in the back room, machine learning and and artificial intelligence to look for anomalies in our assets. And interesting to note, already we have fifty three of the structures that we've modeled in terms of smart path that are giving us a twin to do that and give us a head start going forward on those assets. Next slide, please, Carly. Another area of emphasis for operations, and this chart kind of indicates from the New York ISO's perspective that all of the the goals, what it shows is that the number of interconnection cross projects that are required to solve the decarbonization in the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act creates a need to analyze many, many scenarios. And what you're seeing by the slide and what it represents is really the cumulative proposed capacity in megawatts is proposed from now until twenty twenty eight. As of mid this year, the New York ISO Q had about four hundred and seventy total projects. That's in order of magnitude higher than what they're they're usually say five or ten years ago analyzing with their staff. And they are really each individual engineer at the New York ISO probably has twice the number of of cases that they're they're looking at. And of course, that can create a backlog of analysis. The cumulative megawatts for interconnection, including land based wind, offshore wind, solar and energy storage is expected to continue to increase ten times in the next six years from about five gigawatts this year to about fifty gigawatts in twenty twenty eight. And it looks like there's going to be a potentially twenty billion dollar total investment to get where we need to go in that time period. From a long term perspective, the New York ISO has just published a resource outlook and is projecting over ninety five gigawatts of new zero emission resources will be acquired by twenty forty. And that's two or three times today's capacity of existing generators in the New York control area, which is essentially all of New York State. So we're keeping a close eye on on what they're doing there. Next slide, please, Carly. So what that means for the New York Power Authority and our resource, of course, many of these will interconnect with our own assets, whether there are our own interconnections or other proposed connections. And today, sixty proposed projects as of the mid this year are really being analyzed. About ten thousand megawatts of renewable injection are being proposed and installed in there. And this creates about five hundred million dollars worth of assets that are being built by developers and others and ourselves included. But in in many cases, New York Power thirty will have an ownership interest in those assets going forward. All of these, of course, are intended to really focus on the Climate Leadership, Community Protection Act and decarbonization goals. And this concerted effort and these looking for unintended consequences of of one scenario versus another is very complicated and the computing power is is immense. It it takes a lot. But among the evaluated projects that we anticipate is about one point five billion dollars with two assets built for New York Power thirty by twenty thirty five. Good news is we're well positioned for this, I think, as an organization in terms of our intellectual capital. We just recently merged in the last year our, what do we call our production cost analysis team with energy economics and of course, system planning to kind of have everybody looking together to support the ideas that come from Phil Toyah's team and and NIPA development around things that they're doing, but all their also also other stakeholders, whether it's nicer to the New York ISO or other developers that we're working with. But there's a lot of ideas coming in and putting those people in the same room to look at all those contexts and push and pull for from the finances to the technical aspects is important. And then going forward in support of construction of these things, we're also looking to take a hard look and and merge some of the functions around our our construction cost estimating, which has really got to be significantly more competitive in the early estimates. We've always had luxury in our own assets to kind of be conservative in those estimates. But when we're talking about developing and competing, we have to have a clear view of what we're doing there. Also taking a look at the constructability and making sure from a technical perspective, these ideas will work. And of course, continuing to value engineer as the as these projects go into construction. So the good news is I feel we're well positioned. We continue to work with HR and recruiting and retaining employees that can support these initiatives. But we're going to be realigning the organization to make sure these competencies are available in support of Vision twenty thirty. And that would conclude my report and I would certainly entertain any questions.
A lot in there. Thoughts, questions from anyone? Uh, okay.
I would I would just add, I think, Mr. Chairman, you know, that our knowledge of the grid and our transmission expertise, given the extent of the transmission build out, it's going to be required for us to meet our goals, puts us in a really unique position to really drive, drive the progress toward those goals. So just it's it's a great role for us to play and a place where we can really be impactful.
Sweet spot for us all the way around underscores, yeah, the value add that we bring to everything and every opportunity. So. And I agree just how we continue to lean in and invest and ensure we maintain, you know, that competitive or collaborative advantage. So. Terrific. Okay. Uh, Sarah, on the commercial ops side.
Good morning, trustees and colleagues public. It's an exciting meeting actually for me just to see all of the great work that human resources is doing in terms of supporting the development of our people. I just came off of a two day all hands meeting with the commercial ops team and we had a great opportunity. Justin came, you know, and spoke to us, but we were really looking at how our work ties to Vision twenty thirty and really having an opportunity to meet each other for the first time in a couple of years. So there's a lot of energy in this group too as a result of that. So next slide. Could be too that I was at a concert last night, but who knows that I'm on my third cup of coffee, but that's okay. All right. So themes here, innovation and strong performance. It's continuing from what we've already talked about, but on the electricity supply side, you've heard from Adam and myself, very strong results when it comes to the merchant margin this year due to higher gas prices, setting the marginal cost of electricity as well as just a colder winter and the strength of our hedging program. On the economic development side, I don't want to understate how important the people that are contracting our assets are not only to support the jobs creation or retention, the capital investments in New York State, but fundamentally, these are long term contracts that reduce the volatility of our of our hydro net operating income. And so I want to provide kudos to the BPAC team and the CAMs that are working across the state to ensure that we have long term contracts for our hydro. They've processed over eighty five awards this year and we really are supporting the transition in the CLCPA in terms of green jobs and green industries as well as allocating and providing additional volumes to disadvantaged communities and coming to innovation, really supporting new innovative industries such as a semiconductor, hydrogen, batteries. We we really are looking to lean in there and support the innovative industries across New York State. Next slide. Again, all green. I I remember when I first started that you really liked the Christmas tree. And I mean, really, we're we're getting closer to to the holiday season. So maybe I'll throw some yellows in there for you, Chairman. But no, we have a really strong execution this year. And what I would call your attention to is for the capital CPCs, the second line in terms of the three hundred and two million, we're on track potentially to have the highest number of contracts signed ever for with our customer facing business when it comes to clean energy solutions. And secondly, you'll see the robust pipeline in terms of the EV charging infrastructure contracts signed. Those are with our customers across the state. Niagara Frontier Transit Authority, we're working with the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey as well as 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 the MTA. And I anticipate hopefully that 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 will become an even more robust pipeline going forward. And going back to what Justin was saying about solar and storage and the opportunities for the IRA to have an impact on our customers, you know, we're on track for solar and storage for this year, but really see opportunities to counter the headwinds that we've been seeing in terms of supply chain inflation and getting those projects finished such that we can really accelerate the pipeline there. And lastly, in terms of innovation, I would highlight that the New York Energy Manager is part of the most recent EO twenty two, which the governor issued for all state agencies. NIAM, which we built over the last couple of years, is going to become the source of record for GHG baselines for all state agencies across across New York and will help track and ingest additional information and data such that we can really leverage that platform through the benefit of the transition. Next slide. Leaning in on innovation, Justin key noted the Advanced Energy Conference that was sponsored by SUNY Stony Brook. It was a very exciting media conference there, lots of people. It was at the Marriott Marquis in downtown Manhattan, right in Times Square. And I can say, having been to Manhattan now a couple of times the last few weeks, it really is back. New York really is back. I've heard the governor say that, but yeah, you can't get across the street. So that's a good sign, I think, for our economy more generally. But we're not forgetting the rest of the communities across New York State, the town of Yer- Yeran Decoy. Right? Okay, good. Because I was going to do the the French accent that sometimes they get in trouble when I say hustle. Okay, so we're helping, no matter what the size of the community is, whether it's the larger major five cities or the smaller ones, ensuring that they're able to capture energy savings, both in terms of GHG reduction as well as just financial savings in terms of supporting their communities. And finally, you will have seen at the last Finance and Risk Committee, the new EV charging vendor awards that will you will be voting on today. But that again is supporting the fact they're really accelerating when it comes to the the transportation electrification. Next slide. And this is great. On Friday, I was at the Evolve New York one hundredth Charger Milestone out in Riverhead, Long Island. It was really fitting to be there. I was reflecting on that as I was driving down and I was looking at, first of all, it's a gorgeous day, blue sky, fluffy white clouds, but Riverhead obviously has the Pecanic River. It has the the sound to the north and it has the Atlantic Ocean to the south. And and Long Island has thirty percent of the EV owners in New York State. So while Evolve is looking to support incorporating chargers where there is not penetration of EVs, we also are looking at supporting where there are to continue to accelerate that. And that was the first site in in Long Island and we will be having one in Comac as well as in Bridge Hampton in the coming few weeks. And we've undertaken a lot of additional activities, as you can see in the small bullets, in terms of how we can leverage our partnerships with the IOUs, how we can leverage our partnerships with our sister agencies in terms of streamlining permitting and really working with the New York DOT too to see the funding that's coming from the federal government. If we can continue to help to put that to good use to accelerate things. Next slide. This is just a high level of the different customer segments we're working with. About ten percent of the bus market within the transit agencies, NIPA is currently facilitating the electrification of that. OGS is taking on a stronger role to support the state agency's fleet electrification and we're in the midst of looking at a hundred level two chargers as well as public charging in New York City and across the state. And what we see too is an emerging focus on electric school buses. There've been clean, green schools initiatives that have come out in the state of the state and we're working with our our partners and sister agencies to determine how best to fund those as well as accelerate those electrifications as well. Next slide. And just stepping back, this is the context for why we're doing this. Forty percent of the emissions in New York State come from the transportation industry. And you'll see on the right, the red box, that's really what we're targeting. The class one, class two light duty vehicles as well as the buses and some of the medium and and heavy duty bus fleet. So again, NIPA is leaning in and and targeting the largest areas of focus. Next slide. And this is just a little more detail in terms of the policy drivers and all of the actions and initiatives that NIPA is undertaking. You can see we have an incredible relationship with the MTA and are looking forward to in the future, hopefully in the beginning of next year, sharing some additional great news in terms of supporting Phase Two of their electric bus initiative as well as as some of the other activities. Next slide. And finally, this is just the cumulative progress. I don't think we can understate how strong this is. You know, we had the headwinds of COVID for two years, which really put us in a in an emergency response mode and really trying to ensure the safety and security of our contractors and our employees. But in in aggregate, when you compare both evolve as well as the customer patient charging that we're doing, we've already supported the implementation of our three hundred fifty charging ports and and utilized eighty million in contracts. And you can see on the right, we have a very positive trajectory and a year over year growth to continue to accelerate and lean in. And I really believe that we're at a tipping point when it comes to the vehicles that are coming out from the OEMs, the interest that we see from the public. And that is also supported both by the state's policies as well as the federal funding that's coming out to support the transport industry. So we'll look forward to coming back and sharing more more exciting news and milestones with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Sarah. Thoughts, questions for Sarah? The school buses obviously has gotten a lot of focus on it, at least locally it has in Buffalo and like. The the availability of the technology, the production is there, you know, supplier side. I mean, educate me a little bit more there as to rapidly, when you look back up a slide there, you look at the growth and over the next couple of years, clearly you're leaning a lot into the, we're leaning a lot into the school bus segment.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest in there. I mean, in the end, what contributes the payback is the utilization of the buses. The challenge sometimes that school buses have is that they have a lower utilization than other bus transit vehicles because they're used for a couple hours in the morning and then a couple hours in the afternoon. And so the cost of the of the electrification of those vehicles, the payback is a little bit longer. But again, with the federal funding that's coming as well as the focus by the state, we do have the vendors in terms of the buses themselves are rising to the occasion, but for sure, there's a lot of demand that they have to keep up with. But again, there are a lot of entrance and we're getting more 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 sophisticated too when it comes to the delivery of them. So I mean, watch this space, I guess, is my answer to you because it's it's an area that we're focused on to see how we can most effectively deploy them.
Chairman, I think there there's a resiliency play here too with the buses, with the school buses, right? Because with all those electric buses sitting in a location, they become one big battery, right? That can be used to supply potentially the building.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I mean, that goes exactly to 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 the innovation and things in terms of, yeah, the micro grids and things. Yeah.
Even as you say that, we'll start with the hurricane and the ability to charge without power. You've got, you know, all the rest of there was a little bit of that on the neutral. Couple days. So that's interesting.
Yeah, it's interesting because when Hurricane Maria hit Puerto Rico previously, we past company looked at sending a electric bus there so that individuals could go and basically charge their laptops, charge their phones, et cetera. So yes, it's definitely what Justin was saying in terms of being able to leverage that for resiliency.
Anything else? And there's nothing wrong with all green.
No, I, okay. What's my favorite color? As Joe Grisler remembers. It is. Green is good. And like I said, it's my favorite color, genuinely.
The holidays are coming, but green works just fine. So well done, Sarah. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Adam, you updated us in finance committee a couple of weeks ago, but for the benefit of broader audience, please do so again.
Yep, on on the theory of or the continuation of the color of green. Money's green and. And well, good morning, trustees, NIPA colleagues, members of the public. And yes, so it's a continued. And yes, so it's a continuation of what we spoke about at Finance Committee. While we're not having quite as good a year as Aaron Judge, we're we're still doing pretty good and beating our targets.
We're not free agents either.
But the themes continue in terms of revenues being as strong as Sarah mentioned in terms of our energy prices and where we've locked in our hedging this year. And although we are seeing some softening in general commodity prices, some gas prices are lower, energy prices have gone lower in the last few weeks, but still above where we had projected. So we see strong strong trends to continue as of the through August, we were at a net income of a hundred million versus a target of forty-two. And again, revenue strong, expenses tracking to budget. Some additional expenses in the monetized funds, we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. But, you know, overall, you know, ahead of schedule in terms of our actuals, we go to the next slide. In terms of our year-end projection, we've, you know, raised it. I think we said last time it was at the higher end of that range. So we've raised that range. Still remaining somewhat conservative, but we think we'll be somewhere between that one eighteen and a one thirty-five coming in at the end of the year. As I mentioned, expenses in terms of ONM, you know, still still in line with budget overall. Other expenses are are higher, mostly due to the monetized funds of which, you know, those are additional funds that come in when we generate more power than a tariff. So the majority of that goes into the Western New York Fund. And then we have the Northern New York Fund, which gets a little bit. And as you we've discussed in previous meetings, we've accelerated the industrial incentive award for the Erie County Harbor Development Corporation, and that was twenty-seven million. And then we have five million for a potential future program to address Kurt Talman's. So we put that there as well. We've had some additional provisions in certain areas, but again, overall, you know, running ahead in all areas and not just in generation, but also in transmission. As we continue to build more, build out the transmission that we've been discussing in the Joe's report, we're seeing, you know, higher revenues from that and more of our, you know, efforts and expenses throughout the organization are certainly being consumed with the area of of transmission. But, you know, we are still in very volatile times. We see a lot of headwinds in the economy. Inflation is still not yet under control. So we're, you know, keeping an eye on that. The Fed is being taking more vigorous actions. We see rates going to at least four and a half percent by the year end. Probably peaking somewhere in the first quarter, second quarter of twenty-three, so long as we see peak inflation. But at that same point, I think where the, you know, right now, the economists are saying that recession is likely. So we have to take that into consideration and it's having an effect on the on jobs, employment, the stock market. I think we all see that. So all of that is having a and an effect on, you know, consumer demand in general. So these are all the inflation economic signs we're looking at. Obviously, Russia, Ukraine still, you know, top of mind in terms of how it impacts the energy markets. Europe is also in a recession. And it's going to be difficult for them also getting through the winter if they don't have gas supply. So we'll see some effects of that as well.
Other than that, things are pretty
So in right, given all that turmoil and volatility, I think we consider ourselves pretty fortunate to be sort of where we are. Also, just, you know, aside from all those financials, just in terms of budget and your materials, there were two things. One is that when we sent to the trustees, the six thirty financials that are not audited, but those six thirty full financials with, you know, footnotes, et cetera, being sent to our banks, rating agencies and others. So those were in the materials as well as the filing of our twenty-eight oh one, which is required by the Public Authorities Law, which is more of a an outward-looking cash-type projection. So it's not really relating back to our financials, but it's a requirement under the Public Authorities Accountability Act. And we also filed recently with FERC new issues about our expenses in terms of how we allocate our costs and depreciate our assets. So that filing has gone in and been approved. That will also help us fine tune how we how we manage our expenses and our revenues. If there are any other questions, you know, certainly open up to
We haven't asked one yet. So the the net of all you just talked about in terms of ramifications, market dynamic, et cetera. You're saying it doesn't really, you don't expect it to have any net impact between now and the balance of the year.
That's correct.
Moving parts and pieces where we'll be. What's your first look at crystal ball for twenty-three relative to twenty-two for all of our lighthearted commentary earlier? What goes around comes around. How do you expect, you know, trends to look going into twenty-three in terms of market? What we benefited from or what we've been, you know, hurt by here? What's your first crack at a twenty-three crystal ball?
Yeah, so I I think twenty-three is going to look a lot like twenty-two in many ways. You know, we are getting to that point where we're trying to hedge a lot of next year's energy. And while I said there has been some softening, it's still going to be stronger than what we budgeted for this year. As far as interest rates go, the impact on us will be minor for the short term because we've locked in our long-term financing in April. We were able to get a three point which looks all the more better, right? Yeah, getting in and out. And our short-term borrowing has come way down. As I mentioned, we in earlier meetings, we sold off over three hundred million of our energy efficiency loans. So we brought that down from five hundred to two hundred. So that'll reduce our 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 short-term borrowing costs, which was being used to to fund that. Investment income should go up because we should be able to earn more on our portfolio. So that'll actually be a positive in terms of the interest rates. But given what's gone on in the stock market, it will potentially put some pressure on our OPEB expense, but certainly put pressure on our pension expense. I would assume next year's pension expense is going to be a lot higher for everybody, but particularly for entities like us, the MTA and the Port Authority there on Gatsby, sixty-eight accounting. It's a it's a more, you know, punitive accounting pronouncement in terms of how the pension reacts to changes in the stock market. Unless there's a miraculous turnaround between now and March thirty-first, I'm assuming that the state pension fund will be underperforming their their bogey, which is now five point nine percent. I mean, the good thing is that they did bring that down from eight. So that helps, but it'll still be significant.
I'd get some better from a higher discount rate, but yeah, I hear you.
So I mean, that's what we're really seeing. And, you know, in terms of the inflation and other things like that, I think we are, you know, work, as we mentioned at the last meeting, working with our our partners in SSM and project management and coming up with ways that we can mitigate costs in terms of our big rock capital projects and try to get ahead of some of that as well.
So as you've begun to plan in four twenty-three, yeah, there's a lot on the table, a lot on the agenda. Our ability to continue to fund and lean in, you know, we can remain confident. You know, in terms of our ability to match our resources with the demands and requests of us.
Absolutely. And we're looking at it regularly. So there's a lot of work coming down the pipe.
And in that area, you know, we're trying to be more innovative in our financing, looking at other structures like project finance, public-private partnerships, you know, potentially bringing in private financial partners for some of our bigger projects so that we can, you know, take you know, certain amount of money instead of doing five projects to ten or fifteen, leverage our dollars. So we're looking at all that and obviously working with the chamber as well in terms of the various federal bills that are out there and federal funding. And we've been talking with them about ways in which we can be able to participate in some of that as well so that we can do some of the projects that are important to the state and governor.
And I think, you know, again, kudos for just our ability to leverage in more challenging times the strength of the balance sheet and the strong position we're in. Well, we're not recession-proof. No one ever is, but yeah, we're able to continue to, you know, push forward. So well done to you and the and the team and the entire organization. Any other questions for Adam? Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much, Adam. I appreciate that. Phil, speaking of big projects and a lot going on, give us a drag, Brian.
Sure.
Flyover.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, trustees, staff and guests. I'm pleased to provide the latest update on the NIPA development projects that are currently under construction or in various phases of development. So the first, we'll start with the the SmartPath project. This project is rebuilding our Moses Adarondak transmission lines. Right now, we're on track to complete the Moses Adarondak two line, complete construction on that this November. Shortly after that, we'll roll into construction on the Moses Adarondak one line, which we expect to complete next May. Currently, on the Moses Adarondak two line, we have a hundred and twenty-four out of a hundred and thirty-three foundations complete. So that's about ninety-three percent complete. The remainder of those foundations, we expect to complete. I'll say next week, within the next week or so. So on track there. All materials on site. As far as demolition on the Moses Adarondak two line, that's pretty much well underway. No issues there as far as staying on top of that to complete the construction. On the Moses Adarondak one line, like I said, we expect to start the construction on that in December. Once we wrap up the Moses Adarondak two line. Along that line, I'll say most of the materials are on site, but no issues as far as delivery that we expect to inhibit the product, construction of that line. The team did experience a number of outage delays or cancellations with the New York ISO this summer because of of weather. It was it was hot and, you know, at during certain periods, they halt construction just to make sure there's no system impacts. But even weathering through those, the construction is still on track. So the team did an excellent job with our our construction contract partners. So everything's moving along there. SmartPath, SmartPath Phase Two. So there was a portion on SmartPath that was permitted under Phase One, but it was construction was really timed with SmartPath Connect, which I'll get to in a second here. But we have one potential reroute associated with construction near the dam up at Messina. So the team's working through that to make sure there's no technical issues there. But construction on that continues and that's well underway to complete on time as well. Moving along to SmartPath Connect. Not sure if the last time, but if I mentioned this, but we did receive our Article Seven Award from the Public Service Commission. So that was on track. And I think within the last week, we received our environmental management construction permit as well. So that is on track to start construction very shortly here in October. So that will be another upgrade of the Moses Willis lines as well as continuation down to eventually down to the Utica area with the National Grid portion in the partnership with them on on the development of that project. See, contracts are all in place for that. Materials, contracts are in place. The other thing that our licensing group within business development took care of is pre-construction meetings with the regulators and the contractors, just to make sure everybody is aligned as far as how that will progress. So a lot of detailed work going into that in preparation to start construction and remain on track for that project. Next slide, please. Central East Energy Connect is a project we're working on with LS Power in New York. Mentioned last time that LS Power is having some technical issues with energization of the Gordon Road substation. Those issues have been resolved. They began energizing that substation line by line, so they're taking it one line at a time. I believe two out of the three lines have been energized now. The remainder of that work is expected to be completed next week. That project is about forty-eight percent complete with the the target to finish that at the end of twenty twenty-three. So things are moving along there well underway and no issues to report as far as the continuation of that line. Next slide, please. Clean Path New York, that's the Tier Four project that we're working on with Forward Power. The team is working very hard on the Article Seven preparation. The target date is to submit the Article Seven application in October, working with Forward Power.
Which means what?
The Article Seven application is the Public Service Commission review with all of the interested parties, whether it's DEC, landowners along the right, the right-of-way commenting on that, going through, making sure that there's the justification for the construction of the line. There's a public need for the line. And then that the route and all the associated work with that line is in compliance with the with the regulations. So we're working on that. Hundred and seventy-three mile line, the majority of that will be in existing NIPA right-of-way. So we have a few, we're calling them micro reroutes associated with the line due to terrain, logistics of the line construction. There's a lot of going through the CAT skills. There's a lot of steep slopes, ravines, river crossings. So we we, there are some instances where we have to get additional right-of-way. So we're working with Forward Power just to finalize that routing, communicating with our landowners, a lot of communications with elected officials, communities along the way. As a matter of fact, this evening, we have a meeting with the Manhattan Community Board because this line will eventually go through the New York City area, landing at the Astoria location in New York, in Queens. So a lot of that public communications, making sure that everybody's aware of what we're doing, answering any questions, resolving those issues in anticipation of submission of our Article Seven, just to make sure everything's lined up beforehand. So that work is going on as we speak. We're also working on details on the landing at Astoria Substation, working on the technical and layout details with Forward Power as well as working with our commercial operations team and utility operations on how we integrate the use of BG for energy storage into that project to make sure that we're protecting our rights, our interest at BG, as well as optimizing utilization of that for the Forward Power and the Tier Four renewable energy getting into New York City. Propel New York. Unfortunately, we were we were anticipating that we would hear fourth quarter of this year from the New York ISO on that solicitation. The latest news, it will be first quarter of next year. So the team is working very hard together with New York Transco addressing any New York ISO requests for information, technical details, addressing those issues, supporting that. We did do some presentations at the New York ISO. We're expecting to do another one at the New York ISO as well as with stakeholders, just to address any questions or concerns that may come out of that. Given the location of that in the New York City, Long Island area, a lot of routing concerns, issues associated with that. So team is working well with Transco, just working very hard to make sure that we're prepared for the eventual award of that by the New York ISO. Again, first quarter of next year. We're one of, we have six proposals that are still in the running with multiple proposals from other developers. Thank you. Next slide. Just a few other updates that we have. The development team through our licensing group is supporting utility operations on a number of projects. The Y forty-nine project, the repair or upgrade of that line to address the reliability issues we've had. The team has worked through to help get the environmental management construction plan in place to support the construction of that. And that work has started with the installation of additional manholes in anticipation of replacement of some of the underground line there. I'm also supporting them for the environmental management construction plans on the communications backbone work that's going on to install fiber optics along our right-of-way. And lastly, the New York ISO has initiated the next round of for quarter one thousand public policy transmission needs assessments. So they're seeking comments from market participants. We're anticipating that solicitation to go out to the street next year sometime once the PSC follows the regulatory process there. But we're monitoring, providing comments on where we think the needs are for the next round, just to make sure that when Joe talked about all those projects and the amount of generation that's proposed in the state, making sure that as that generation is built, there's pathways to get that to the load center. So we're just monitoring that closely and staying involved in that process to make sure that our technical input is is considered as part of that as well. And just want to state, I've stated this before, but you know, I talk about the construction of these projects. We work very closely. You know, we're we're kind of the recruiter out there finding the next We work very closely, you know, we're we're kind of the recruiter out there, finding the next quarterback or defensive end that the team needs. Utility operations is there managing these in the construction phase. We work closely with them. We're also working closely with utility operations as part of the strategic vision tactics to make sure that we have the building blocks. When we get these solicitations, the New York ISO PPTN process is an example. We have ninety days to respond. We need to make sure that we have the building blocks. We don't have the time to go through that detailed engineering during that process. So making sure we have the building blocks to be able to develop the projects that are constructible for the price that we submit within the timeframe that we also submit. So working on all those issues across the board, the support from the other parts of the organization have been, has been tremendous as far as helping us succeed. And I just want to end with, you know, Joe talked about the amount of projects we have and others have as well. I've been in the utility business in New York for thirty years. I can't recall a time when, you know, utilities had maybe one or two small sections of three forty-five KV lines under construction. We, starting next week, when we start Smart Path Connect, will have three separate three forty-five KV double circuit lines under construction simultaneously. So just a tremendous lift for the the power authority, but also showing the amount of effort that will be required to meet the state CLCPA goals. Thank you. Any questions?
Great update. Appreciate that. A lot of moving parts and pieces, obviously, there. Plate's overflowing, so appreciate the collective effort that you just referenced.
And just a, just a plug for Phil and his team in the the new study that came out of the transmission needs that are going to be studied now by the ISO. We had, we had identified the same pockets of transmission need since we've been studying them for several years now, right?
Yes.
So we're going to have an advantage as we, as we go forward.
Terrific, terrific. Anything else for Phil? Anything? Bill, thanks very much. They appreciate the great work and the time to keep us current. As a setup front, while we talk canals with regularity, want to periodically hear right from the source. So pleased to have Brian Stratton here today to give us a drill a little deeper on the good work that's been done over the last little bit, more importantly, where we're going forward. So Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning and welcome trustees and my fellow NIPA and canals employees, members of of the public and all here. I am happy to have the opportunity to be here is it is exciting to be able to come to White, White, White Plains. Usually my travel takes me in the, in the opposite direction between Albany and Albany and Buffalo, just like the song. I travel the canal, but I am, I am pleased to be here.
Excellent. We're pleased to have you.
And we have had a great, a great season. We are beginning to come to the end of, end of our season. We will wrap up about October fifteenth. And maybe a couple of weeks after that, wrapping up the hundred and ninety-eighth consecutive season of navigation all on the canals. And I am happy to report that navigation is up. The things that we are doing to make the canal stronger, to make, to make the canal better, to do all of the great, great ideas, great ideas seem to be paying off. Overall navigation is up fourteen point three percent over last year. And actually, as you know, we have four canal systems. Navigation is up six point five percent on the Erie Canal. It is up by eighteen point five percent over last year on the Champlain Canal, up nearly ten percent on the, on the, on the KU Seneca Canal and on the Oswego Canal. Going from Syracuse to Oswego, navigation is up seventy-six point five percent.
B, you've been out there a lot.
She has been. Thank you, Pete. We've been, we've been fortunate. So we are very, 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 very happy and I'm going to take you through some of the great projects that we have had. I am also happy to report that Justin and I have had the opportunity to be out on the canal together many times over the past year, over the past to ten months. And I am also happy to report that Trustee Gonzalez has been out there and we are extremely grateful for, for, for her support. Chairman, we would love to see all of the trustees out on the canal and we welcome that opportunity. So.
Well, so as B advises on, we're both, we'll all be there.
She's got a big boat, so I think she could probably. Let me just recognize all of the.
No problem.
Let me just say thank you to all of the, the Eureka, Eureka winners. I think that we can, we, we, we can find relevance in the canals in all of those presentations that we are particularly proud. As I said, of our own canal winner, Marissa, and we look forward to following up on that. Rebecca Hughes and I are serving as her executive sponsors. So we are going to work very, very closely with her. What I'm going to show you, give you today is an update on our reimagined canals, canals program. I'm going to talk a little bit about the operational challenges that we have on the earthen embankments and then wrap up with a very exciting event coming to Buffalo in twenty twenty-five, and that is the World Canals Conference. So big things ahead. First of all, reimagine the canal's highlights and working on the screen left to right. The Brockport Pedestrian Bridge, which is going to be a fabulous project connecting the SUNY Brockport Campus to the Empire State Trail have reached the ninety percent design phase, at which point we held a community meeting in Brockport on May twenty-fifth to gauge public support. And although the meeting started out with some residents raising concerns about safety and about, and about maintenance, I am happy to say that our great team turned that around and that meeting actually ended in applause and a standing ovation. Doesn't always happen on, on the canal that, that, that way, Mr. Chairman. But we are happy that in, in, in this instance, we, 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 we did a great job. So Brockport is ready and this is going to be a great project. And in fact, we are looking forward to the opportunity, talking now, Justin and I talking about possibly bringing a future trustee.
They're requiring Wilson Foundation is.
That, that is correct, sir. The Ralph C. C. Wilson Foundation. I'm going through my, through my talking points so, so fast that I am overlooking that. But in addition to the funding that we are putting in, the Brockport Bridge has also secured a one point two million dollar federal grant from the TAP program, Transportation Alternative Program, TAP Grant. And in two thousand, the Ralph C., the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation, excuse me, two thousand twenty, twenty twenty, the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation gave us a two million dollar grant. So three point two million dollars in OPM, other people's money. So that is going forward. In the center of the screen, the KUgo Whitewater Water Course, if there ever there was a challenge along the canal, this is it to, to navigate the white, the whitewater. This project advanced to the, to thirty percent design fees. We're ready for you. We'll be ready for you, but we have to get a private developer first. The project team determined that this project is best positioned for a private, private developer and cons, and cons, and cons, concessionary's model. So the reimagine team has issued a RFI for a private, private developer. So we will keep you posted on that and we will bring that vision to life along the KUgo Seneca Canal.
What's a realistic timeline for that, Brian?
Well, obviously, we have to get the results of, of, of the RFI, but we would think, what, two to three years, Rebecca? So we'll keep you posted. I look forward to coming back and.
So I got training time, yeah.
Keeping you updated. That's right. You've got time to get in shape for the whitewater. Thank you. And then all the way to the right is Guy Park, Guy Park, Guy Park Manor, a beautiful historic manor located along the Erie Canal in the city of Amsterdam at Lock, Lock eleven. And you may recall that this site was severely damaged in two thousand eleven by the onslaught of Hurricane Irene and Tropical Storm Lee, not five months after I began on the job. So this has been, this has been devastated. And the project is going to be coming back to life under, under the reimagine canals, 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 canals program. We have received a four point six million dollar FEMA grant that will be used to support this. And the site as reconstructed will house cultural and institutional tenants who will offer community benefits while also supporting operation and maintenance. And then as the project moves into its second phase, we, it will be a public park, which will highlight features of history and the environment. So work is going to be getting underway very, very soon. That is the Guy Park Manor along the Erie Canal in the city of Amsterdam. Next slide, Carly, please. Earthen embankments, I'm sure you have heard these talked about before. Many of the canal sections, particularly in the western section, are actually earth, earth and embankments built up. You might think of a canal being dug into the ground. This is, this is actually where the canal is actually raised. And so those embankments, which can be as high as fifty, sixty feet tall, are actually holding back waters. So they're really, they're really levees, so extremely concerning. They're old and we have to keep them strong and safe. So we have contracted with three engineering firms to assess the canal segments in Western New York, where most of the elevated embankments are, are located. Each of these three firms has presented large scale engineering options to address the embankment integrity in a comprehensive manner. And in addition, NIPA dam, 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 safety staff recently completed engineering assessments for all the canal waste weirs in this area. Those are the, those are the devices that actually drain water out of the canals. We have, we have, we have overflow, we have water control. These assessments are in addition to the temporary, temporary measures that have been put in place this year across the western region of the canal, largely that spans from Rochester out to Medina. And those measures include monitoring and inspections and reduced, reduced water levels. Finally, Mr. Chairman, as we all know, emergency management is always a top, a, a top, top, top priority, even when it takes us out, outside of the, outside of the, outside of the, outside of the the, the, the canal area proper. Dam safety is a very important topic. And we actually have three reservoirs that are located in remote regions of the Adarandak Park. And that would be Woodhall Dam, South Lake Dam and North Lake Dam. And in fact, Woodhall Dam, which I believe might be the picture in the center, is so, so remote that it, it is, it is accessible only by boats and barges. So we have gone in by boat and, and by barge to try to get, get an assessment on these. All of these, all of these rubbers, all these reservoirs actually date back to the BN large period of, of the canal in eighteen fifty. So these are, these are assets that have long been under our purview and we're doing our best to make sure that they're safe. Even better yet, to get them out of our hands and into someone else's. And then finally, we all know that emergency management is in fact job, job number one, even when it takes us out, outside of the canal. And earlier this month, as many state and local agencies were called upon to help us answer the call to battle brush fires at Minnewaska State Park within the Hudson Valley. The Canal Corporation actually answered the call by providing the use of its new D six bulldozer operated by our own Cody Oldham out of canal section number two. So thank you, Cody, for helping us answer the call to, to support that. I've never seen the D six bulldozer, but it looks like a fabulous piece of equipment. Next slide, Carly. Finally, finally, Mr. Chairman, we, Governor, Governor Kathy Hochul announced in June, I think it was on June fourth, that New York State has won the rights to host the twenty twenty-five World Canals Conference, which will bring together hundreds of canal inland waterways and, and, and enthusiasts, professional scholars from around the world. And I had the opportunity to attend the World Canals Conference this year, the twenty-two World Canals Conference in Leipzig, Germany. And this was a fabulous gathering. We learned, we learned a lot. We learn a lot from what is happening in every canal system and in every inland waterway system all, all, all around the world. So the twenty twenty-five conference, of course, is, is well timed because that will mark two hundred years from the opening of the Erie Canal in eighteen twenty-five. So big things are going to be happening there. And even though we are bringing the World Canals Conference there, probably in September of twenty-five, the Erie Canal Harbor, Harbor Development Corporation is already well underway with a series of summer-long events that are going to be celebrated at the canal side, canal side district and up culminated with the World Canal Conference in twenty twenty-five. We will be joined by our, our partners, the Power Authority and the Canal Corporation have already begun to meet with our partners for this, and that includes the Erie Canal Heritage Corridor, the Erie Canal Har, Harbor Development Corporation and Visit Buffalo Niagara. So we've got some good team players. Although we are going to show off, show off, show off canal side, this conference theme is actually forward, forward thinking. And it is going to embrace our, our discussions of innovation, opportunities and challenges which drive healthy and sustainable waterways of, of the world today. And furthermore, it will provide us, just in three years from now, the opportunity to show off everything that we have done over the past four years to make our, make our canals safer, stronger and more popular. This is the fourth time that the World Canals Conference will be held in our state. It was held in Rochester in two thousand and in two thousand and ten, again in Syracuse in twenty seventeen, when we marked two hundred years since construction of the Erie Canal began in Rome, Oneida County. And, Mr. Chairman, I will make sure that to keep you and, and the trustees updated as we move forward to Buffalo twenty twenty-five. Thank you. That, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer.
Everyone in Buffalo looks forward to hosting, so. Terrific. Thanks very much, Brian. It's a great overview. Appreciate that very much. Well done.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Brian, when can we see the economic development impact of reimagining canals, right? Because I think the two stories complement each other.
That's a very good point. We're, we're going to be doing a economic impact study very, very soon. You know, we have a lot of, a lot of figures. Certainly, it's tourism is a very important economic impact. However, non, non-tourism uses hydropower, water. We did a two thousand fourteen story, two thousand fourteen study, and that determined that the non-tourism impact was six point four billion. So it's absolutely huge. So we have a, a, a great opportunity both on the tourism and on the non-tourism front. But let's get more of these projects into place.
Yeah, it's just.
And then be able to, to be able to spin off from.
Longer term play, certainly, and we've, you know, accepted that. But that's important why, you know, we've wanted to pivot from, you know, to reimagine the canals because of the upside opportunity and what can be done to leverage the historic success for even, you know, a multiple of that in the years ahead. So.
Because I'm assuming the seventy-six percent increase at the Oswego Canal has to do with the focus, laser focus the mayor of Oswego has put into.
Well, it's true. We worked, we worked with them. We have eight locks along the canal from Phoenix to Oswego. They're, they previously were not opened and closed all, all, all at the same time. We put them all, all on a consistent schedule. So they opened up at seven AM, they closed at ten PM or, 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 or nine PM. Oswego's got some great economic development going on. And I will, I will confess for full disclosure, those numbers are also based on the fact that we were closed on the Oswego Canal for quite a bit of time last year. So that.
There's bound to be micro benefits, you know, individual benefits, the cumulative lift will take some time, but
The other thing is.
It's just a consistent focus. I mean, Brian, Rebecca, the team, everybody's done a fantastic job.
Just for awareness, when you look at that picture of the the embankment, what you're not seeing is that there are residential neighborhoods at the bottom of those embankments, which only heightens
Correct.
the safety issues concerned with, with. the safety issues concerned with, with the integrity of those embankments.
This, 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 this doesn't show the, the, the great embankment, which is a very historic engineering feature of the canal, which runs approximately from Pittsburgh to Brighton. Is about sixty feet tall. It was huge, a great, great engineering feat, but it is a dam. It is a dam holding back holding that water. And there are houses and homes and schools right at the foot of that. So we also need to be able to weed this out so we can actually see, see the canal too. So we can see if we have, if we have water, water, water coming out. We actually have people that actually walk, walk the towpath and they look, their job all day long is to look down, down the embankment stand to look, look, look for problems. So if you're retired and, and you want to get in shape, great opportunity.
Well, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look forward at the agenda. So I'm gonna give you the hook. Great, great report. Appreciate the time. Well done. And kudos to you and your team for making real meaningful progress. Obviously, we're all in. It's a significant investment for us and very pleased to see the beginnings of the pivot and the benefits of making, you know, the turn to reimagine the canals and excited for what the future holds. I'm excited to hear in the future more from you, Rebecca and everyone. So thank you for your time today very, very much. Earlier today, we had a governance committee report, very enably chaired for the initial time by our new governance committee chair, Ms. Gonzalez. B, would you give us a little report and update, please?
Absolutely. So during the governance committee meeting this morning, we received an update on the diversity, equity and inclusion plan, which encompassed the EI competency reinforcement, the diverse business community assistance program and a PTEC update. The team continues to expedite their plan to improve diversity, equity and inclusion across the organization and in external relationships. The team presented their progress to date and the status of their programs. We also received an update and learned something new, some of us, on resource alignment and insights on workforce succession planning and process excellence, kaizen events, right?
We had a moment, we had a kaizen moment.
We had a kaizen moment. Finally, the committee adopted a consent agenda, which included the vessel naming recommendation in honor of famed American abolitionist Harriet Tubman. A few routine annual reports were covered and the meeting minutes from the last meeting. The vessel renaming recommendation is before the board for adoption.
And as you referenced that earlier, we're excited, proud to do that. And if I could have a second to that motion? Thank you, Dennis. Unless there's any other discussion, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We're excited to have a Harriet Tubman represented in our fleet. So well done. Okay, in Tracy McKibben's absence, I'll give a quick report on our finance committee meeting of a couple of weeks ago and a handful of items that we need to act on here. Bless you. He is always a robust discussion and a wide range of initiatives that we continue to underwrite and support, some of which were referenced frankly earlier in the discussions today. And the canals recommendation to approve our quarterly subsidy of twenty-one point three million as part of our ongoing annual operating support for the canals. If you recall, there's a recommendation to approve a thirty-two point nine million dollar contract with Ferguson Electric in connection with the life extension and modernization program at Niagara. Sarah mentioned the expansion, extension of the EV initiative up to upwards of two hundred fifty million and the additional approvals to subsidize and support all of that. Adams talked to us in the past about the establishment of a captive insurance company and the benefits that will accrue going forward and the opportunities and flexibility that creates for us. And we also had a recommendation for agile lab support for the next five years for the sum of upwards of twenty million. So those are five separate initiatives that would ask for a motion to approve in a second. Thank you very much, Dennis and Mike. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Those motions are carried. Our consent agenda, hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review. If there's any questions, happy to entertain. Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thanks, Michael. Second, Dennis. All in favor, aye. Motion carried. That concludes our agenda for the day. So unless there's any other matters to come before us. Our next meeting is December thirteenth. Hard to think about December already. The bills will be well established as Super Bowl favorites by mid-December. So we look forward to celebrating that. And I thank everyone for their time and attention today. Congratulations again, Eureka Challenge winners and all Eureka Challenge participants. More time, Brian, Rebecca, thank you very much for your time and the update. Excited to hear all that. Justin and team bring home the bacon in the fourth quarter. We look forward to hearing all of that. Motion to adjourn. Second, all that, aye, aye. Have a great day. Enjoy, everyone. Thank you.